She may arrive at some point during the meeting, but she didn't really know what her ETA was going to be from CDA. Okay, so it is 1:02 PM on December 4th, 2025. We're here for a special meeting with Board of County Commissioners, HR, and our legal counsel to discuss state statute and how state statute informs the roles and responsibilities of the administration of the county fair, the fair board, and the Board of County Commissioners. Fair overview? Okay, Commissioner Corn, did you want to kick it off?
So I would like to turn it over to Director Holmgren. He's the one that has put some time and effort into this. He's the one that is presenting what is in front of us right now. And I think what he's going to do is give us an overview from front to back on things that he had picked out. And then maybe we can go bullet point by bullet point after it's been read through and come to conclusions so that we can clear this matter up once and for all, hopefully. So if you don't mind, I'd like to turn it over to him right now.
Sounds great.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and our wonderful legal team joining us. So it's been recently brought to my attention in my role as the HR director that Bonner County is currently at risk regarding employee relations and employment practices pertaining to the county fairgrounds personnel. Currently, there is a lack of clarity regarding the county's organizational structure as it pertains to the county fairgrounds. How the county chooses to understand and operate as it pertains to the county property, which is the fairgrounds itself, and the annual county event, the county fair, which is held in August of each year, will continue to have a lasting impact on county employees. According to Idaho Code, Section 31-807, the B OCC has the power to quote, "take care of, manage, and control" unquote, county property. According to Idaho Code, Sections 22-201 and 22-204, county fair boards appointed by the B OCC exist for the purpose of facilitating the annual county fair event. It is my professional opinion as the Human Resources Director that the county fair board has been operating beyond the scope of its responsibility for some time and has veered into the lane of responsibility that belongs to the B OCC under Idaho Code, Section 31-807. This has resulted in the fair board thinking that they employ the county fairgrounds personnel and can direct their work. County fairgrounds personnel have expressed to me that they are frustrated and have no clear sense of direction or guidance concerning their role and responsibilities. As a result, these county employees are beginning to feel very discouraged and demoralized, and this could very likely lead to more serious employment relationship problems if not addressed. I think it would be in the best interest of Bonner County to adopt the following operating framework to achieve a clearer understanding of organizational operations and safeguard and enhance the jobs and wellbeings of the county fairgrounds personnel, who are county employees, not fair board employees. And I apologize to not do two-sided to two-sided, so you're missing the whole second page of my notes. I can correct that after I'm done reading through this. So the fair board, if in existence, as appointed by the B OCC, is responsible under Idaho Code, Titles 22, Title 22, Chapter 2, solely for the singular annual event that is the county fair. This event occurs in August of each year, and it's reasonable to think that the fair board would rent or lease the fairgrounds, which is county property, from the property owner, it's Bonner County, for about three months out of the year, July to September, say, a month to set up, a month to run the fair, a month to take down, clean up. This would enable the fair board to fulfill its responsibilities under Idaho Code, Section 22-204, to employ its own labor for the purpose of running the fair each August. As the property owner, it's the responsibility of the B OCC to care for and maintain the fairgrounds as county property under Idaho Code, Section 31-807, during the other nine months or so out of the calendar year when the county fair is not occurring. This would be accomplished through the county fairgrounds personnel, who are already employed by the county. They would then have clear guidance, understanding, and a budget for executing the guidance issued by the B OCC to care for, manage, and control the fairgrounds property, again, under Idaho Code, Section 31-807. This framework would achieve three key goals or objectives. Number one, the B OCC and the fair board are both able to clearly fulfill their roles and responsibilities under Idaho Code without interfering incorrectly in each other's lanes. Number two, county employees, which are the fairgrounds personnel, are correctly employed by the B OCC with clear job guidance and direction, mitigating the current risk of additional employee relations matters. And the fairgrounds as county property can be more effectively maintained in support of the verbally stated goal I've heard from the board about making the fairgrounds self-sustaining, which will help mitigate tax burdens to the local populace. The B OCC has a chance to avoid a very real employment practice, employee relations iceberg currently on the horizon. As the HR Director, I strongly recommend the B OCC consider this matter and take action to safeguard county property and county employees. I will go make a second copy of this page and look forward to the ensuing conversation.
Thank you. So I've asked legal from the Board of Commissioners to be here and legal from the board, the fairgrounds board, so that we can discuss openly maybe each one of these bullet points, if that's how you guys would like to do that, so we can come to a clear conclusion and an agreement from both entities so that we can hopefully build that foundation and framework and move forward on everyone's responsibilities.
I think just one thing before we get farther is that we're representing... Pardon me?
I'm very muted this.
Do I do anything?
I just have to stay. It does not amplify you, it just makes it easy to hear on...
This is Robert A. from the prosecutor's office. I just want to point out that the prosecutor's office is coming into this as one voice. We're not representing two different distinct legal entities. Obviously, we have our Division of Labor, Nate handles the B OCC, I handle the electeds. But when we come into something like this, we're coming from kind of a one mind point of view. We're not going to be working against each other. So just wanted to point that out before we get further down into the weeds here.
So would you like to address each bullet point? Would you like, I can read the bullet point.
Yeah, do you have a specific question? I mean, he just read that.
Yes, so it's a broad overview of all, of everything? So unless you guys are comfortable with just discussing the whole thing.
Are you saying you want to talk through each point?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood. I thought you were saying, read them again.
No, I'm not going to read them again.
I was confused. Yes, you want to go point by bullet by bullet?
Yes.
Thank you.
So bullet point one and two is kind of mute. There's nothing I don't think, see, that needs to be discussed or decided on. Bullet point number three, how the county chooses to understand and operate as it pertains to the county property, the fairgrounds themselves, and annual county event. The county fair is held in August, which will continue. I don't think there's anything that needs to be discussed on that. Number four, according, according to Idaho Code, 31-807, the Board of County Commissioners has the power and authority to take care of, manage, and control county property. Is there any discussion or disagreement on that statement?
So I, I agree with that. However, I think we have to view that in light of how 31-822 may apply.
And when we get to that, I would like to maybe dive into that.
I don't think we have that on this list.
3108 is on our second.
31-822?
Yeah, that's a different section that pertains to, I have a copy of it, of it here. And as I read it, my humble layman's interpretation and opinion is that this pertains to a fair district is the language of that statute, not necessarily a fair board. And it pertains to the transference of property to a fair district. So this would be, in my opinion, if the county sold property to a fair district or if property, a site, grounds, or parks was obtained through a local district tax levy for the purpose of obtaining property for a fair, but the control would be under the fair district. But I do not, I'm not aware of the county fairgrounds property. Well, number one, I don't think there, I'm not aware of a fair district existing in Bonner County. Maybe there's a taxi district, but as a body or an entity, I'm not aware of it. Nor am I aware of the county fairgrounds property being sold or transferred to said fair district if it existed. And that was my understanding of what 31-822 was getting after, not necessarily a fair board.
And I, I see, I see that interpretation when you look at the way it's titled. My question is, because unfortunately, a lot of statutes are titled with terminology that aren't consistent with the details of the information that are describing them. 22-204, in the first sentence of the last paragraph. And this is me trying to understand it because it's so gray that I'm just trying to talk through to make sure we hit on all these.
Yes, that's what we're here for.
Yeah, so I don't have a position on it right now. I have, I'm trying to ascertain what we think the language actually says and intends. So that first sentence says, it shall, and it says, it's referring to the county fair board, I believe. It says, "it shall take charge of and manage all such property as the county may have acquired or set aside for fair purposes pursuant to the provisions of Section 31-822 Idaho Code." So while I agree with the director that it's, it says a district, this part, this definition of, of the duties of the fair board says that, it says, "the county may have acquired or set aside for fair purposes." So I don't know how we define, what has, what has or hasn't been set aside for fair purposes. As historically, I would interpret the actions, for as long as I know of the county, the, those grounds have been set aside for the, primarily the purpose of the fair. And other, other events have also been held there at the discretion of the fair board. So it's kind of a, another gray area to me. I'm trying to determine whether or not this actually supersedes the duties that the Board of Commissioners has for the maintenance of county property because this particular property may have been set aside for these other purposes, which then put it under the auspices of the fair board, so the Board of County Commissioners. And that's kind of one of my underlying questions.
Well, my opinion to that real quick would be that I don't see anything on the fairgrounds, on the county property, that is specifically for the fair. The whole fairgrounds gets leased and rented out all year long for other events such as the rodeo, the draft horse show, 4H, that is not fair. So I don't, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that would be specifically for the fair only. Everything on that property gets utilized for other events as well, just...
Yeah, and I hear, I hear your position. And I hate, to me, this is almost like a debate club topic because I feel like the statute is so gray that I would also be able to argue the opposite side of that to say every aspect of the grounds and facilities are used for the fair and other activities. So I'm not sure how we define that.
You, you're trying to make a distinction without a difference here. The county fair board only works under authorities delegated by the county commissioners. So you are responsible for the fairgrounds. You determine what happens at the fairground. You can delegate that authority to the fair board to act on your behalf, but even when there's a fair board, it is still your fairground because it is county property. And so you're trying to get too big a distinction between what the commissioners can do and their authority and the fair board. The fair board only has authority as the commissioners give them that authority. So even when there's a fair ongoing, it's still county property, it's still a county function. You have just delegated that authority to the fair board.
Okay, so, so upon the creation of the fair board, the county has not in any way delegated the 100% of any aspect of the management of, yeah, we've not divested ourselves from, from the, the care, keeping, management of the facilities that are being used for the fair.
Correct, and that is why they are to give an accounting to the commissioners because you need accounting of that authority you have delegated to them. You've never fully divested yourself of authority over those fairgrounds or the, the conduct of the fair or any other activities that are taking place at the fairgrounds. You are still responsible for it. You have just, you've just delegated that authority to those people. They are still answerable to you at all times.
So then when 22-204 opens by saying that the county fair board shall be charged with the care and custody of all property belonging to the county and used for fair purposes, and then it gets into the monetary responsibilities as well for monies received, then is it, is it correct that what you're saying is that delegation and statute does, still does not divest the B OCC of their responsibilities, their duties of the care and management of county property? But we actually have an overlap in essence or a dual responsibility for the same property? That's what I'm trying to get my head wrapped around is this, I see statute saying we both have responsibility for the same property.
You are responsible, and I say you, the Board of Commissioners is responsible for all county property. Now, road and bridge, you are not engineers, I mean, I guess you could, but, but, but you are not necessarily engineers who know about road and bridge. You have experts that you hire to run that for you. You still retain authority over those county properties. You, you depend upon employees appropriately to, to do that, who have expertise because we can't expect the three of you to be expert on every aspect of county operations. That's why you hire experts to, to do that for you. But you, the board, retain ultimate authority and responsibility over all those properties. That is included with the fair board. You have hired experts, people who, who have connections with the ranching and farming communities here. They know the vendors, they know the realtors in those areas. They're also familiar with people who, for instance, show different livestock. So they have an expertise, and you have delegated to them to, to use their expertise to help the county by having this fair. But you retain the authority and the, the responsibility over the fair, its conduct, and those things. And there, there is in other sections where it says, the Board of County Commissioners takes authority, and it's the same language that is in 204, that says that have the care and custody of all property belonging to the county. So that, that, that language appears for the, the county commissioners for all county property. And so you, you are responsible for the good conduct. You, this, what this is saying is, when you delegate to the fair board, this is what they're to do, act in your stead, basically, but they are still answerable to you at all times.
If I can clarify one point that Mr. Adams said, it's probably a, I heard him say that you employ experts. Just want to be clear, there's no employment relationship with volunteer members of the public who are appointed to the fair board or any board or, or commission. The only employees that the county has an employment relationship with in this conversation is the fairgrounds employees. And I think where the confusion is, is we have county employees who are paid by the Board of Commissioners. They are not paid by the fair board. The fair board or certain members of the fair board are attempting to direct their work, are treating them in certain ways that may or may not be correct. And we have employees of the county who perhaps do not feel secure in their jobs or do not know how to do their job because they don't have a clear understanding of who their bosses, what their responsibilities are. And I'm thankful for the people we have in this community who are, you know, experts in their field in the agricultural industry. That's a big part of Bonner County, it's a great source of strength. And so to be able to, you know, leverage that strength for the purpose of running a county fair, like the language of Chapter 2, Title 22, over and over says, "for fair purposes, for fair purposes, for fair purposes." That's the context, it's all about the fair, all about the fair. What a wonderful asset and resource to have, you know, people willing to volunteer their time in a, in a rural county, you know, to have an awesome event like that year over year, and that's great. I think the problem is that the maybe scope of work has gone outside and beyond the fair. So we have events that occur at the fairgrounds that are not the fair, whether it's emergency preparedness conferences, the Christmas craft fair, the rodeo, 4H, equestrian. I know there's been dirt bike events, there, there's other events. That, none of that is the fairer for fair purposes, the county fair that occurs in August. That's all other events that occurs on county property. The property owner ought to be responsible for that. And that's where there is a value of having county employees who are fairgrounds employees because they can help manage that property on behalf of the B OCC because it is a great resource available to the community to use that for other events. But that's not the fair, it's other events, other timeframe. And so the body that's been delegated with authority comprised of volunteer members of the public for the purposes of the fair once a year is also having oversight of things that are not the fair on county property, it's not their property, it's county property. it's county property, and there's influence and direction being provided to county employees who are county employees, not fair grounds employees, and it's causing confusion and consternation. And that's the primary gist of the issue and the problem we got to solve. And I think there's a way forward where we can more clearly define roles, responsibilities, lanes, priorities, who does what, so that way we can maintain, you know, the value and benefit of the knowledge base of the agricultural community for running the fair, and then also using the great county employees that we, you know, have for taking care of the county property and making that asset available to the public for other non-fair events.
So, appreciate all that context, and I agree, I see that same language where it talks about the fair as an event, it's confusing to me because then it has very broad scope language, it appears, the way it's written where it says that the county fair board shall be charged with the care and custody of all property belonging to the county and used for fair purposes.
And used for fair purposes.
Right, but what I'm saying is the entire fair grounds are used for a limited scope period of time for fair purposes. This says they're charged with the care and custody of the entire grounds that are used for fair purposes. So then, are we interpreting that to say that it's limited in calendar time to the event of the fair, the setup, the conducting of, and then the takedown cleanup of, like it's another event? And then, is it essentially, do we ultimately try to define it simply like a lease or rental contract agreement that says the fair board has this scope to use the fair grounds and they have a responsibility, a care and custody responsibility during that period of time for that single event, and then we are going to manage the rest of the use of the facility for all of the other times of year? That's the piece in statute I just keep getting hung up on, is that language to me isn't clear with regard to how do we say that they're responsible for the care and custody of something when the event is so limited?
And legal can talk about that, but I believe the way I read it is exactly the way you stated it, and we're letting the fair board use our county property, buildings, grandstands, so therefore they're charged with the duty of overseeing, maintaining, if anything's damaged, it should be their responsibility to fix, not the county's because we're in essence leasing it out, but I'll.
Well, if I may add one more element to that, and this is where, you know, it's an HR matter, is 22-204 says the fair board has the power to employ labor for the purposes of the fair, they can employ a secretary, they can appoint a treasurer, so they're not executing or using that authority that they have right now by this undefined confusing relationship with county employees. And Commissioner Corn, you mentioned county property just a few minutes ago, I would also add, you know, it's county employees as well. And I think back in the day, there was a lot of, you know, confusion, and I've heard, you know, rumor and hearsay and historical stories from bygone years or days where, you know, maybe this was what happened in the past, but something happened where the people who worked at the fair grounds who maybe were fair board employees back in the day got wrapped, brought under the county, and that's kind of how we're at today. So, we could either have this framework centered around the property and who's the owner of the property and who bears responsibility for the events that occur on the property, that'd be one approach. The other approach is, we don't have county fair grounds employees, and the fair board is responsible for employing and just taking that entire, you know, thing on, that would be another option potentially, pending legal's advice. But for me, it comes back to who owns the property, and we do have county employees. And right now, those county employees do not know who their bosses, they're paid by the B O C C, but there's elements of the fair board that are trying to act as if the fair board's their boss and can hire and can fire and determine their work, and that's just not how employment relationships work. And so there's a very real risk of, and it's already started to bubble up just through informal conversations I've had with employees, but if we do not address this, there is the potential for something more problematic to come down the pipe, and so if we have an opportunity to take wise action to mitigate risk, as it pertains to employees and employment law, I would much rather prefer that than being behind the eight ball.
So, I think first of all, just to put one matter to rest, is that the fair grounds are owned by the county, period, full stop. The fair board does not have any ownership interest in those fair grounds, they're tasked, if we do have a fair board, which is not even something that is a must-have, it's a, the Board of County Commissioners may create or may open it up for a board to manage the fair for fair purposes, we've already covered that. There's no ownership stake in terms of the land, so the county is the owner, and the Board of Commissioners, county commissioners, is kind of the overseers of that, for lack of a better term. And I think Commissioner Corn had pointed it out that, you know, what the statute says is for the purposes of the fair, and I think that's kind of the main thing that we have to tack everything to, is that what they're doing is for the purposes of the fair, they're not tasked with the craft, I mean, even though they might now de facto be tasked with these other jobs, the statute doesn't task them with that, we might have done that just because of history and tradition or whatever we seem to do, but the statute doesn't give the fair board that responsibility to be responsible for the grounds all year round, it doesn't give them responsibility for other projects that are going on there, it only gives them responsibility for those grounds from the period, and I think that's something that we need to do, is kind of set those timeframes, like when does the fair typically start, when does it typically end? Those are the dates, you know, and we can look historically, maybe they start on, you know, July 1st, they start getting everything set up, by September 25th, they're all done, we can put in the framework of their responsibility is that this is when you are responsible for these grounds, for the maintenance of it, for the care of it, for making sure that, you know, if there's whatever comes up, that that is the fair board's responsibility as directed by the Board of County Commissioners, you're the, you know, you're the top of the food chain when it comes to that. So I think if we put it in that kind of context, it really, I think we start to make it a lot easier for us to kind of see what their responsibilities are, and it's all written out in the statute, obviously, but I think there is some confusion, there is some overlap, and we, you know, the Bonner County has kind of allowed the fair board to take on more responsibility than they should have, I think, and for whatever reason, but again, if we're trying to sort that out here, so I think from a starting point, all they have responsibility is for, is for fair purposes, period, we don't need to consider anything else outside of those, I mean, that's just, makes it a lot easier for us.
We should use that as the filter with which we read all of the duties and responsibilities that the statute lists for the limited time event of the fair, so then that'll define how we interpret it.
Correct.
The rest of the language.
And I think something key that Mr. Abel talked about was, when is responsibility assumed for the fair grounds? We're talking about the physical property. Now, I understand for massive event organization and coordination, it often takes months of planning and communication to set up vendors, to get things done, all of that can be done by labor that the fair board employs under the authority granted to it in 22-204, and those coordinating activities and events do not have to occur on the fair grounds with the blessings, benefits, or curses, however you see it, of modern information, technology, and telecommuting power that we have. So the fair board could well within its power under 22-204, employ its own labor, they can go hire their own people to do event coordination and whatnot, that can happen, you know, they know the timeframe best and how long it takes to do that, so they can do that for the fair, but then they assume the responsibility of the fair grounds through a very clearly defined agreement and process, and, you know, there'd be, you know, we'd have to hammer out the details of what that would mean for the facilities, property maintenance, there's probably going to be, you know, insurance, risk-related things as well. So that's kind of how I see the two sides of that coin, so it's not restricting the fair board and their ability to conduct operations because some of this stuff does take more than three months, and it takes lots of email and phone calls with vendors, but that work doesn't have to be done on the fair grounds, the fair grounds is just for the physical event for fair purposes.
I apologize, I need a recess for just like two or three minutes. And then, sorry, it's 1:35, let's take like a two minute recess. I'll.
Okay.
Of course, I was going to make.
in those roles and responsibilities potentially and whether or not somebody has to be on-site to perform a duty. And I think it's also interesting if we're reading everything in Title 22 from the context of a limited schedule, scope, event of a fair and not 365-day use of the fair grounds. And it talks about they have the ability to hire, right, for labor for the purpose of the event. And that's different than the full-year maintenance, supervision, scheduling, so forth of the fairgrounds management. Yes, sir?
This is Nate Adams from the Bonner County Prosecutor's Office. I think what we need to keep in mind is the fair board operates within whatever delegation of authority the commissioners give it. If the commissioners give a more expansive authority to the fair board, i.e. to manage the fairgrounds throughout the whole year, then that is, you know, it depends on the grant of authority from the commissioners. So, if you, if they've been, if they have been managing the fairgrounds all year round, that's because that's the authority that was delegated to them by the commissioners. We can, if you choose, pass something that is going to limit that authority to just be the fair once a year, that would be appropriate. I think that is different than the employment between Bonner County employees and fairground employees. Even if the fair board coordinates with the fair manager to conduct a fair, that doesn't change the employment status of the fair manager. I think it would be reasonable that during the fair, they're still going to be coordinating with the fairgrounds manager and the other employees that are full-time county employees. They will be engaged in coordination with the fairgrounds, but that's not going to change their employment status as county employees.
Absolutely. There certainly would, and Director Holmgren, there certainly would be a coordination aspect as a possibility. But this is kind of now we get into the rubber meeting in the road of current employee and HR problems. The fair manager job description as written lists the fair board as that position supervisor and amongst its duties and responsibilities lists serving as the secretary to the fair board, which that language comes directly from Title 22, Chapter 2, which says that the fair board has the power to employ a competent secretary with general managerial powers. So, in my opinion, well, I guess it would depend on what direction the board wants to go with the framework. A possible course of action could be that the fair manager job description, who is a county employee, needs to be reassessed, approved by the Board of Commissioners because that position is funded, paid for, and hired by the Board of Commissioners. And that language needs to be taken out because it's a county employee, not a fair board employee. But there's a problem right now because as written, the fair manager job description has language in there that has led to a lot of these problems and challenges. So, hopefully that helps maybe some more context about current challenges with understanding, you know, that, I guess, just the relationships between all the parties involved. Yeah, it seems like we have a long history of, as a county, of mixing and mingling duties and responsibilities of what the management of the fair grounds should be as compared to the management and coordination of the fair event. And so, I think there is some overlap there that should get clarified and cleaned up. And if I'm, from what I'm hearing from legal counsel, it's that, not that the fair board has necessarily operated beyond its scope of responsibility because it sounds like the board has either through intentional actions or lack of actions, has essentially delegated greater responsibility than just the planning and management of the fair event.
May have. Well, we don't know what happened with the past board and when all this.
At least, at least the prior board and our current board has, has allowed the current fair board to manage all events that take place at the fairgrounds. The scheduling, the fee, like, so, so by not doing otherwise, we have given them that scope of responsibility and authority is the way I see it. So, until or unless we define it differently, that is what we have done as a board. Even as I look back, and I, you know, this is just an admission of ignorance, even when we had some meetings where we were talking to them about looking for their plan, hey, would you please put together that five-year plan? We'd like to see your plan. We got a draft plan a few months ago. That plan, as we requested and as we've discussed, has had to do with the future planning, preventative maintenance, oversight of all the facilities and grounds. So, really, we have, through our own communication, indicated that we're expecting them to manage everything.
And we've done that because we didn't know, such as.
We inherited that format.
Maybe, but not you so much. But I was appointed early during the whole EMS thing, right? And for many past boards, the boards treated EMS as an department, even though it wasn't. So, now, this is kind of a similar issue. We're now being alerted of, hmm, maybe this hasn't been done correctly.
Yeah.
And maybe we should clean it up and fix it.
Yeah, so I guess I appreciate the clarification and I just want to, with the information's coming forward, I want to be clear that I, I don't think the fair board has acted inappropriately because it sounds like there's been a history of the county commissioners saying, this is the expectation because we haven't said other, we haven't defined it otherwise, therefore. So, I don't think anyone's done anything wrong, but if we, if we're saying we're better understanding the intent of statute and if we think there, there should be a different bifurcation of responsibilities and duties within our county for the use and management of the fair grounds, and then how do we define the fair board's overlapping use of those grounds for a specific fair event? And that's, that's just a different definition that we have to come to.
To me, that'd be a coordinating meeting, bringing in the fair board, bringing in our fair manager, our county employee, and Board of Commissioners or whatever, and discussing where those lines are at, talking to the fair board and asking them, how much time do they actually need to produce the fair itself? We don't know what that timeframe is because I know there's other events scheduled. I think the rodeo is like a week or two weeks before the fair starts. The rodeo's not part of the fair. The last meeting, they were discussing maybe incorporating the rodeo into the fair, which would change that. But there's other things going on, so we wouldn't, and we could talk about that after we decide if this is what the board wants, right? And this is what going, moving forward, that we're going to give the authority of the fair board sole jurisdiction on the fair and that we, as a county, are going to retain the responsibility for the property and the employees. Then we can sit down and have discussions just like we would with any other vendor or any other event, say, okay, when do you, when do you need it for?
Right.
And maybe it starts off if they need it for, you know, six weeks, well, you're going to have limited access or whatever up until a week before the fair because we have other events going on. But I think that's a discussion for down the road, once we get this finalized and get the foundation concrete here.
And to your point, that gives me a whole new understanding and interpretation of when, when 22204 talks about the fair plan. It seems to me like really the intent, because it doesn't have a definition, just says the plan, seems to me like what it's really intending is, what are your plans to conduct the fair event? What are your, what's the timing? What's your budget? What are your needs, right, from a, from a practical, tactical, functional perspective? So, we can coordinate.
Right.
With the other purposes and events that the county has for the use of those grounds and facilities, then, yeah, it's, it's a, it's kind of like just a long-term contractual relationship where we say, we're intending for you guys to have the leased use of this space where you have care and custody responsibilities under the lease terms and this is what, how we're going to coordinate it is, you're giving us a plan that says, this is what we want to do for the next year's fair. Here's what we need to coordinate with you on. So, I, I think if we read it from that perspective, it makes a lot more sense.
It makes a lot more sense to me.
And it would be potentially more appropriate and better from the perspective of it's been understandably challenging for the fair board to try to accomplish the responsibility of the long-term planning, preventative maintenance, upgrades, and everything of the fairgrounds facilities, which has been a daunting task for them to figure out. And so, if we, as the county, more directly manage that, then we can have part of our communication with them and request that their plan incorporate, in my mind, I'm going to keep going back to the lease terms, I don't know how else to think about it. Are we, are we looking for a portion of the fair revenue to help offset the cost of the use of the facilities and their main, like, this is, I think, just a very all-encompassing umbrella-like conversation about how do we manage this?
Right.
I think to Commissioner Corrin's point, you know, step, step one is, I guess, the board providing guidance to fair board, HR, legal, facilities, the fairground employees of what the, what the vision is and that scope of responsibility and, and then from there, we can start having those coordinating conversations because there will be a bit of a handoff and transition of operations in progress to what the future vision is. And it'll take time and collaboration and meetings so things don't fall through the cracks. And at the same time, it sounds like a great way forward to, you know, not, not lose that valuable asset that resides within the agricultural community of a rural county, can, you know, still use that for the benefit of the county through the individuals involved, their connections, their knowledge, their expertise for the fair, and then provide some clarity of, of direction and duties and job descriptions and expectations for the employees who work there to run the facilities and maintain it and use it for, for other purposes. So, yeah, it all sounds like a, like a very clearly understood way forward to start addressing maybe things that have been challenges and haven't been able to be accomplished because we haven't been structured to address the problems in the first place. So, if we're all in agreement on what, what authority the B O C C has and how we can consider restructuring, redefining this, sounds like really then the next steps are to come up with a plan, proposed plan, and then figure out if we like that plan and how to make it actionable. To talk about restructuring things, roles and responsibilities, job descriptions, all of that. The, the other thing I'm just wondering is, do we have examples of any other counties in Idaho and/or case law that speaks to this, or is this just our personal interpretation as one county of this matter?
This is Nate Adams again from the Bonner County Prosecutor's Office. I don't think there's any case law that I'm aware of. I don't know that this has ever been litigated, so I don't think there's any case law. As far as what other counties do, I am not, I'm not aware. Have you?
One of the things we were going to, this is Robert Abel from the Prosecutor's Office. We were going to reach out to some of similar-sized communities or counties and see how they have organized theirs, just to see if they're kind of in the same boat. We were thinking about reaching out to Cootney County, but I think they're a little bit, due to their size and it's more of an urban environment that they might have, but, you know, similar-sized counties in the state to kind of see what they are doing with their fair board and their fairgrounds and how it's all managed and all that kind of stuff. So, there's still a little bit, I think, a little bit of work to be done to just kind of get a good idea of how to manage this. And, and as I said, that, that's including, you know, reaching out to other, other counties and other fair boards to just to get an idea of how they do it, so we can, you know, take their good ideas or, you know, do whatever we need to do to make it functional here again.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great if we could go to see if anyone else is doing it more along the structure that we're discussing, so we would at least have a, a starting point to reference to see if we wanted to do something similar or completely different.
So, my opinion on that is, I don't necessarily always want to be the follower. Sometimes it's nice to be the leader. And the way we're reading the statutes with legal being represented here today, and this is something that we can do, it's within our purview as the Board of County Commissioners. If it hasn't been done, I think maybe at least, maybe we should maybe lead the way because other counties might be having the exact same problems we are having.
Sure.
Why wouldn't they? When you start mixing these job descriptions and stuff.
Yeah.
It really muddies the water and, like our employees are saying, they don't know who their boss is because they're, they're taking directive from the board, the fair board, and they're taking directive from the Board of Commissioners. And, and when they conflict, who do they make happy so that they don't risk the, getting fired? So, I, to me, it needs to be a black and white understanding of what our county employees are to do, what their roles are, and a very black and white list of duties, what our fair board, what we would like our fair board to do, because it sounds to me like, as the Board of County Commissioners, we can, we can give them as much or as little responsibility as the board chooses.
And I completely agree that we have issues we know we need to solve and we just need to take the lead with doing it. I'm just saying if, if we have any examples that look like good examples that we can glean valuable information from, then let's do it. If we don't have anyone out there, then we can forge the way. I'd just rather be cutting edge than bleeding edge if we have the opportunity to stay just a little off the side of having to learn from mistakes if somebody else has already made them. But if nobody else has made them, then, yeah, we can forge the path. We have legal, legal confidence that we're making a good decision, then.
Yep.
We can build a plan.
And I really, it, it really helps the county, I think, for risk and litigation and everything else because it clearly defines the county's scope and the county employee's scope.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this special meeting was listed, agendized as a discussion action.
Discussion decision.
It is. So, we can make a decision today to move forward with what was discussed and then have further meetings and negotiations, if you want to call it that, to see how we build off of our foundation, if you will.
Yeah, and I don't know that we even need to vote on anything. I think we could just agree to go, go and, and work on bringing forward a plan that's actionable to actually vote on, to say, this is how we propose to restructure, reorganize roles and responsibilities, job description change, whatever it might be. I think we can just say that we're going to go forward and work on it so that we can bring something that we can actually make a decision on.
What I would like to make a decision on today.
Yeah.
If we can, is exactly what minimally we discussed. We, I would like to make a decision that, yes, as a board, we do believe that statute, the way statute is written, that the board can go ahead and delegate to the fair board as much or as little responsibilities as we like, but at a minimum, dealing with the fair itself, so that we have clear action moving forward instead of having another meeting, trying to limit the meeting so that our next meeting can actually be building the walls and our slabs already poured.
And if I may add one thing, Commissioner Corrin, another thing that I think needs to, I would highly encourage and recommend actioning on sooner than later because there are immediate, real-world, time-now implications to county employees. I would request the board consider making a clearly defined decision about clarifying the roles, responsibilities, the chain of command of county employees, so there's no if, ands, buts, or confusion, because that's having a very real impact now and has been on county employees' ability to do their jobs, to feel secure in their jobs, to feel appreciated. And so, I would, I would request that, at least I be given guidance to start working on redrafting, and then I can maybe bring those as a part of this further discussion. I, I just ask for your consideration to add that specific element. Yeah, I'm good with that. It's, to me, again, to me, it's just, we don't have anything that's actionable other than to say, we're going to go prepare something that we can vote on. At the moment, we don't have a struc, we don't have a structure, right, to make a decision about, to say, we, we're going to own this, we're going to have them to own that, here's how we're going to subdivide responsibilities.
No, 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 that's all coming forward, but I do think that we need to make that, the actionable being the fact that we are, we as a board have decided to take this avenue, this route.
Yeah, I agree. So, if, if we, if I'm understanding what you're saying, then I would agree that we would like the Human Resources Department to pursue bringing forward revised job descriptions for the fairgrounds manager and any employees related to it to specifically indicate that their roles and responsibilities are for the, the care, the maintenance, and the scheduling management under the supervision of the Board of County Commissioners for the fairgrounds and that they have no direct reporting responsibility to the fair board. They're simply a coordination responsibility with the fair board, which would be no different than any other renter, user of the county-owned fairgrounds property. So, we're, so we have county employees that are under the Board of County Commissioners that we're asking to deal with the maintenance, the care, and the scheduling for the use of those facilities. And then they're going to have a coordination, collaboration, responsibility with the fair board, but that, all, all supervision and management, it comes from the B O C C. Is that, is that the intent?
Is that the motion?
Is that the intent that I'm hearing?
Yes, that was the, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can just ask the director to move forward with it and then, again, we don't, we're not adopting anything at this time.
No, but I think it would be fair to also not only allow the, the director to move forward with writing up new job descriptions and stuff, but also kind of giving notice, if you will, to the fair board that, hey, you know, this is what's coming down the pike, it's official, it's not just hearsay, because there's a fair board meeting on Monday, which I will be attending, and I don't know if Robert does not attend either. If he does, it'd be really great for him to be able to express the board's decision.
That's fine, yeah.
If you don't mind.
No, that's fine. Again, I think we, we have clear intent, and so if, if we're trying to better define the roles and responsibilities and have the fair board's functions be clearly defined in the near future as to being limited to the fair event, and then we're going to define everything else with regard to how the county's going to manage its, its property, then I think that's a pretty simple, high-level without, until we get into the details of writing it up.
Absolutely.
If you're in agreement with that, then absolutely, we, I'm, I'm in agreement to move forward and let all parties know of our intent until we get it ironed out in detail.
And Robert Abel from the Prosecutor's Office, I think before, you know, kind of any decisions are made right here and now for doing that, just for clarification's sake is that anybody who is an employee of the county is a county, there's no, there are no fair board employees.
I'd just rather be cutting edge than bleeding edge if we have the opportunity to, to stay just a little off the side of having to learn from mistakes if somebody else has already made them. But if nobody else has made them, then yeah, we can forge the path. We have legal, legal confidence that we're making a good decision, then.
And I really.
We can build a plan.
It, it, it really helps the county, I think, for risk and litigation and everything else because it clearly defines the county's scope and the county employee's scope.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this special meeting was listed, agendized as a discussion action.
Discussion decision.
It is. So we can make a decision today to move forward with what was discussed and then have further meetings and negotiations, if you want to call it that, to see how we build off of our foundation, if you will.
Yeah, and I don't know that we even need to vote on anything. I think we could just agree to go, go and, and work on bringing forward a plan that's actionable to actually vote on, to say, this is how we propose to restructure, reorganize roles and responsibilities, job description change, whatever it might be. I think we can just say that we're going to go forward and.
So.
Work on it so that we can bring something that we can actually make a decision on.
What I would like to make a decision on today.
Yeah.
If we can, is exactly what minimally we discussed. We, I would like to make a decision that, yes, as a board, we do believe that statute, the way statute is written, that the board can go ahead and delegate to the fair board as much or as little responsibilities as we like, but at a minimum, dealing with the fair itself, so that we have clear action moving forward instead of having another meeting, trying to limit the meeting so that our next meeting can actually be building the walls and our slabs already poured.
And if I may add one thing, Commissioner Corin, another thing that I think needs to, I would highly encourage and recommend actioning on sooner than later because there are immediate, real-world, time-now implications to county employees. I would request the board consider making a clearly defined decision about clarifying the roles, responsibilities, the chain of command of county employees, so there's no if, ands, buts, or confusion, because that's having a very real impact now and, and has been on county employees' ability to do their jobs, to feel secure in their jobs, to feel appreciated. And so I would, I would request that at least I be given guidance to start working on redrafting, and then I can maybe bring those as a part of this further discussion. I, I just ask for your consideration to add that specific element.
Yeah, I'm good with that. It's, to me, again, to me, it's just, we don't have anything that's actionable other than to say, we're going to go prepare something that we can vote on. At the moment, we don't have a struc, we don't have a structure, right, to make a decision about, to say, we, we're going to own this, we're going to have them to own that, here's how we're going to subdivide our responsibilities.
That's all coming forward, but I do think that we need to make that, the actionable being the fact that we are, we as a board have decided to take this avenue, this route.
Yeah, I agree. So if, if we, if I'm understanding what you're saying, then I would agree that we would like the Human Resources Department to pursue bringing forward revised job descriptions for the fairgrounds manager and any employees related to it to specifically indicate that their roles and responsibilities are for the, the care, the maintenance, and the scheduling management under the supervision of the Board of County Commissioners for the fairgrounds. And that they have no direct reporting responsibility to the fair board. There's simply a coordination responsibility with the fair board, which would be no different than any other renter, user of the county-owned fairgrounds property. So we're, we're, so we have county employees that are under the Board of County Commissioners that we're asking to deal with the maintenance, the care, and the scheduling for the use of those facilities. And then they're going to have a coordination, collaboration, responsibility with the fair board, but that all, all supervision and management comes from the BOCC. Is that, is that the?
Is that the motion?
Is that the intent that I'm hearing?
Yes, let's see.
Yeah, I think we can just ask Director to move forward with it and then, again, we don't, we're not adopting anything at this time.
No, but I think it would be fair to also not only allow the, the director to move forward with writing up new job descriptions and stuff, but also kind of giving notice, if you will, to the fair board that, hey, you know, this is what's coming down the pike. It's official. It's not just hearsay because there's a fair board meeting on Monday, which I will be attending, and I don't know if Robert plays on attending either. If he does, it'd be really great for him to be able to express the board's decision.
That's fine.
If you don't mind.
No, that's fine. Again, I think we, we have clear intent, and so if, if we're trying to better define the roles and responsibilities and have the fair board's functions be clearly defined in the near future as to being limited to the fair event, and then we're going to define everything else with regard to how the county's going to manage its, its property, then I think that's a pretty simple, high-level without, until we get into the details of writing it up.
Absolutely.
If you're in agreement with that, then absolutely, we, I'm, I'm in agreement to move forward and let all parties know of our intent until we get it ironed out in detail.
And Robert Abel from the Prosecutor's Office, I think before, you know, kind of any decisions are made right here, we're here now for doing that, just for clarification's sake, is that anybody who is an employee of the county is a county, there's no, there are no fair board employees except when the fair is happening and they hire people for the specific purposes of running the fair. So I think to make your job, the HR director's job easier is to come at it from, all of them are county employees. If they receive their paycheck from the county, they're getting benefits, they're getting, you know, this and that. That would make them, you know, fall under the, the purview of the, of the county. They are county employees. Nobody is employed by the fair board except for the volunteers who are there as members of the fair board. There's like, nobody who's working there currently is employed by the fair board. They're all county employees.
And with that, I think we have to be clear that, that there is no direct supervisory responsibility of the fair board over any of the county employees, but that there is only coordination that occurs, but not supervision. So I think that'll help to delineate.
I think that's right, yeah.
Director Holmgren, Human Resources, and just tagging on to that, Idaho Code Section 22-204 does say the fair board has the authority to employ labor, but that would be a future discussion point. So there is a possibility there could be seasonal, temporary, part-time, full-time employees truly employed by the fair board that, you know, and, and, you know, I'd be more than happy to assist the fair board with navigating what that would mean if they have a separate EIN, if there's any employment law things that they'd be obligated to meet or maintain depending on their definition or status, whether they're considered a public entity. You know, it can get very, very sticky. You'd want to, you know, help our associated teammates out with making sure they can do what they're authorized to do under code, but doing it, you know, in a way that's fully in compliance with, you know, best human resources business practices and, you know, requirements of employment law.
Yeah.
But again, that would be a future discussion, part of building the house, using that metaphor down the road.
Yeah, they hiring part-time people to assist them with the preparation, cleanup, teardown. And I think, again, that would be also come under, again, the county's employees to say, I see it no different as another, you know, business relationship, if you would, where the county's leasing renting space to another entity to say, as a part of that agreement, are we saying that our county employees are going to provide certain services, certain roles and responsibilities as a part of that event, just specific to that event? That doesn't mean that that outside entity has control over our employees. It just means that as a part of their use of our facility, we're saying we're going to provide certain services with our staff.
Great example, and that'd be no different than the MOU between technology and the ambulance service district for some of the things they, they provide. So there's definitely creative solutions and flexibilities and options moving forward. The strength of this approach is having something written down and documented and formalized so that way, the organization will have institutional knowledge and clarity instead of just trying to remember what happened however long ago, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want me to muddle through a motion?
If you'd like to.
I'll give it a shot. So given the information that was presented before us today, I would like to make the motion that we make a clear distinction between the Bonner County employees, that they answer only to the Board of County Commissioners. They may coordinate with the fair board on items, and that we will be discussing the role of the Bonner County Fair Board.
Defining it?
Defining it.
Okay.
Is there anything else? That's a broad overview.
That works for me. Do you all have any concerns? Do you think there's any? I'm, I'm waiting to see whether or not one of them.
Gotcha. Before we have an amendment to the.
I just think for, Robert Abel from the Prosecutor's Office, I don't think for purposes of clarification to say that they're the employee, that they're directly, the Board of County Commissioners is their superior, Board of County Commissioners or they're designated agents or someone you've, you've assigned duties to be responsible for these people. So they're working under you, but you know, you have a manager who's looking after this fair board manager or whatever, whatever it is, someone, I think, just for a little bit more clarification, that they don't need to come to one of the commissioners for permissions, that you have someone that can, you know, answer those questions for them so you're not bogging yourself down with a bunch of.
We could say that the, essentially, from hearing you treat it similar to other departments under the supervision of the Board of County Commissioners. Because then we can define what the hierarchy is of reporting and all of that.
And so I also move that the Bonner County employees, fair employees, would answer, I think I already said that, answer to the Board of Commissioners and.
Similar to other departments.
Similar to other departments within the county.
Second, I'll step down in a second. And I'll have to step back up. So I've always thought it was a strange thing.
I know.
Do we have any public comment? Looking online, if there's anyone online that has public comment? Anyone in the room? Okay, any board deliberation? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Donkey?
Yes?
Mr. Corin?
Yes. Motion passes. Unless anyone has anything else on this topic, I think we've exhausted the agenda for today and appreciate everybody's input. Appreciate everyone answering my questions. Like I said, I just, when statute is unclear, I like to ask a lot of questions before making a decision.
And this is one thing that I've been kind of wrapping my head around too, and I think there's probably a reason that our state reps sometimes leave our statutes like that to give the individual counties or the individual board or the individual electeds some room to play with. So it's not just a one-lane road, it's a three-lane road.
Yeah.
But both sides have guardrails, right? You can't get outside those guardrails.
That's a generous interpretation. I appreciate that.
It's like, why else?
If I was going to write it, if I was going to write it and I wanted to give you leeway, I would say so in the, in the, in the description.
That's why the common answer from liberals often, it depends.
Yeah. Okay, then it is 2:11 PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. I think we've made some huge progress.
Yeah, that's great. It's very helpful.
Finally, that's some kind of an interpretation of a.